My clock, it is now 5:30. So I'm going to call to order our E-Web Board Meeting, June 1st, 2021. Welcome, everybody. We're going to start off with an agenda check. Is there anybody that wants to comment about the agenda? Okay, lots of heads shaking now, great. And so we will move on to Agenda Item Number Two, Items from Board Members and General Manager. So I'm just going to call on people, if that's okay with you. I'm going to start with John Borowski. Anything you would like to?
Uh, nothing for me at this time.
Great, John Brown.
Um, yes, I'd just like to thank Ann and Holly and whoever else was responsible for the River Trip. I think it was a real good networking thing to not only get us together with some of the elected officials, but also get us educated on the watershed recovery effort. So thanks to all that did that. I think it was very worthwhile expenditure of time and effort. Thank you.
All right, Sonia.
Yeah, I'd only plan to echo what John Brown had said. It was a remarkable trip, and I'm really glad that we were able to go up there and see the investments that we've made in the community and see the impact that it's making and also the work that is yet to be done. So thank you for everyone that put that together.
Matt.
Yep, likewise, the same appreciation for the staff and everybody who put that work together. It was quite a trip and super informative for me. Thank you.
Um, I want to echo that and also say that I really appreciated that we took a trip on land there back, I don't remember when it was, November, maybe, October, December? I can't remember. And then being able to see like some of the stuff that's happened since then and also getting the river's eye view, I found to be really, really impactful. So I hope that we don't have to wait a whole year to do that again because I think that it's really helpful to kind of see this, like in person, the stuff that we're doing. So thank you to everybody who helped make that happen and to the weather for cooperating and not raining on us. All right, Frank.
Well, good evening, President Schlossberg, Commissioners. Welcome to summer. First of all, given the nice warm day today. I have a few things, some quick updates on a number of matters. First of all, I did want to thank all of you for attending the float trip. Also, a second meeting last month to talk about strategy. That was very helpful for me as we move forward and there'll be some back and forth on that. And so thank you for your extra time at an extra meeting. And also thanks for your attendance when we got a tour of the Seneca Sustainability CoGen Generating Plant. I thought that was also informative. Hope you felt the same. So thanks for attending a number of extracurricular activities over the last month, a month and a half or so. So thank you for that. I would normally talk about this a little bit later when we talk about agenda planning, but I did just want to remind members of the public who might be tuning in and Commissioners that we do have an Upriver Board Meeting coming up on June 18th. This is really, it's called a meeting. It's really not a typical board meeting per se. It's more of an information share and customer interaction type of gathering with members of the community up there. We do plan to tee up a few topics. I guess I would call it a kind of a trailer approach or maybe a teaser approach at the beginning. The plan that we have is to talk a little bit, and these are very brief kind of overviews, three-minute kind of overviews on what we're doing around watershed protection, wildfire mitigation, programs and services specific to the customers up there, little bit of update on our costing and pricing approaches and some updates on the Lieber Canal and Carmen Smith. And it's really designed just to inspire some conversation, let people know broadly what we're doing so that we can then have more of a Q and A and discussion format. And so that's the plan. It's coming up. I know if you've got any format or topical type of feedback that President Schlossberg and Vice President Brown and Ann and Holly and I are working on the formats and the agendas and stuff. We have a little bit of time to adjust, but that's at least the plan at this point. And so should be a good evening. Again, another second meeting this month, but looking forward to that. And finally, I had one recognition this evening. I wanted to mention that Susan Ackerman is retiring from E-Web at the very first part of July. And so this will be her last board meeting. I'm sure she's smiling with delight for that. But here's a few pictures of Susan in action, just doing various things for the utility. I have to say that she's really been instrumental with E-Web's Energy Group and all the planning work, not just for E-Web, but for the region. She's been involved with regional energy issues for several decades now and was really helpful in representing you all and E-Web on various energy issues over the last three years or so. And so I wanted to publicly thank Susan, wish her well and let her know that we will miss her very much in the future. But I also wanted to, as part of that, announce that Megan Capper is moving into the position of Energy Resources Manager. She'll be working very closely with me and with the board on a number of energy issues, including the development of the Integrated Resource Plan. So I think that's it for me. Thanks, Commissioners. Back to you, President Schlossberg.
Great, thank you. And congratulations to Susan. That's exciting. And to Megan, too. Just want to clarify something, Frank. You said the date of the Upriver Meeting. I believe it's June 15th. Is that correct?
It is, let's see here. Hold on a second. I would just, that's probably a good clarification to make, I would suspect. Let me just double check. It's June 15th. Yes, you're correct.
Okay.
My bad on that one. Thank you. I guess I'd be alone up there if I showed up on the 18th.
Yeah, you have a lot of texts on June 15th. Where are you? Um, okay. So next, we are Agenda Item Number Three, our Public Inputs Part of the Meeting. So we have four guests who are lined up to speak tonight. When your name is called, remember to unmute your call. Press * 6 if you're calling from a landline or simply use the unmute button if calling from your cell phone. Please state your name and optionally your address or ward and speak clearly into the telephone. Each speaker will be offered three minutes to present their testimony. Try to keep track of your time, but I will do my best to interrupt a little bit to let you know when your three minutes has elapsed. After all testimony is heard, each Commissioner will have an opportunity to speak if they choose, although by policy, we do not engage in a back and forth dialogue. Please note that failure of a Commissioner to speak shall not be construed as supportive or opposition to any speaker's testimony. If a question is presented by a speaker and the board does not provide an answer, an E-Web staff member will contact the speaker so that the question can be addressed at a later time. So the public testimony period for this meeting is now open. And we have Tana Shepherd up first, followed by Kathy Betchin. Sorry if I butchered your last name, Kathy. But Tana, go ahead.
All right, thanks, Mindy. Hey, people, it's me, Eco Chick, also known as Tana Shepherd. Eugene 4J teacher on special assignment as the E-Web Education Partnership Grant Coordinator and Educator, fourth year in the position, multiple addresses, Ward 7 and 8. Thank you, E-Web and the Board for your continued support in funding our dynamic and meaningful educational partnership. This year has been full of unknowns, adapting to a new way of doing things and collaborating to pivot in any direction at any time in order to best meet our students and staff where they are. So this year, I served in my role differently. I learned much by simply listening to and supporting teachers, then adapting to what they were asking for, CSO lessons, web resources, materials, talking through a unit. Direct student connections have been few and far between, an Eco Chick Zoom visit here or there, but the teachers have reached out and utilized many of our offerings, maybe not in the usual measurable, exact data way, but in a having a ready-to-go-to choices available to offer their students way. And this spring, when I have seen teachers in person, teachers that I know really well, especially elementary, they all say something along the lines like, "Oh, my gosh, Tana, if it weren't for, fill in the blank, the resources you put together, we wouldn't have done any science this year at all. Thank you so much." So getting to those offerings. Our very popular salmon education program went totally virtual, came back multiple times throughout the year based on teacher needs. And so that was kind of cool. I continue to support elementary and middle school science with lessons, website, resources, and especially this spring, middle school teachers for hands-on science with solar oven building, wind energy unit made it out, as well as EV and solar car building, even though the challenge isn't happening. And then really, the biggest thing this year, probably, besides salmon, that is, is the 4J Climate Justice Team that we were able to form before COVID that has continued on. And it has high school students and staff at this point. And it's still in its initial stages, but I was able to, you know, support a few students to speak with the Department of Education in Oregon, as well as speak nationally in requests for climate change education across K-12 and all subject areas, which was very cool. And then that team went ahead and built an Earth Day and Earth Week Unit for K-12 students. And that encompassed a website and lots of different resources that are available. And we're going to continue to build from there to continue to reach out to teachers. I started with a newsletter that was called Steam Blast and it ended up morphing into Eco Experience, which was more encompassing. And then overall, just a deep connection to community partners and the city and county to pull off a couple of different projects that are, you know, kind of seeding now, but we were able to do a materials distribution to about 5,200 households around waste prevention management and with the latest information there and especially for us, water conservation. And so overall, it's kind of a long year. I know I'm probably out of time, but just wanted to thank you. And just even though it's been crazy and a lot of what we've been doing has been behind the scenes, it's been very welcome. And it gave us some time to sort of formulate what teachers will really be needing from us over the next few years. So again, it's a great honor to represent E-Web and 4J and the city that I love. And thanks for listening. Have a good night.
Thank you, Tana. All right, next up, we have Kathy Betchin, followed by Pamela Fallon.
Hi, I'm Kathy Becken, and I am Vessel School District's Grant Administrator. So first and foremost, I really want to, on behalf of Vessel Administration, teachers and students, just to say thank you. Even during this crazy year of mostly distance learning, we have been able to provide students with materials for hands-on learning at home, virtual field trips, emergency preparedness plans and more, thanks to our grant money from you. So let me just run through as many projects as I can touch on that I'll have time for to give you just a brief update of what has happened. Several science kits were used this year. We made up kits for students to pick up at their materials distribution and then they completed them at home with their teacher's help. Our salmon, just like Tana said, for 4J, was very successful, that unit. Unfortunately, we didn't get out into the field to do all of our water quality studies, but teachers raised salmon eggs at home and had a live cam on their tanks so students could keep a watchful eye on the development of the eggs. Students were also provided with an amazing virtual salmon watch trip where they were able to learn about water quality, macroinvernment, the riparian zone and more about the life cycle of the salmon, all the things that they would have done if they could have been in person. Sixth grade students were also given E-Web bags filled with everything they needed to make a water filter at home. And they were able to try several different arrangements of sand, gravel, charcoal, cotton balls, et cetera, to make their water as clean as possible through trial and error. As you know, our annual wind turbine challenge did not happen in April, as it typically does, but several of the seventh grade students were able to pick up a kit and they learned about renewable versus non-renewable energy sources. This was not the same task that they do in school, but they were given an inquiry task to build something that they could make move with a fan or a hairdryer. And then they shared what they constructed via Zoom with their classmates and discussed all their findings. We did have some eighth graders that built electric cars in some cases upon returning to school, but given the material constraint and working in partners being non-existent, they did not build solar cars. Hopefully, we'll be back on board with the challenge next year. Each month, I also shared the emergency preparedness emails from E-Web with high school teachers who were then encouraged to share with their students. I don't yet have any feedback on how that went specifically, but I know that teachers, I was getting a lot of feedback from them on how happy they were about the reminders. And so that was kind of fun this year, something different that I haven't done in the past. The high school Electuson Vehicle Project equipment has been purchased relating to car building. Electric motors were purchased for a vertical wind turbine building project that they did this year in which they intended to build the turbine that created the most energy. And lastly, we spent some money on water bottle fill stations. Due to COVID, we can't use water fountains. And so we were having to buy a lot of plastic water bottles, which was just really not great. So we have, we'll be installing some fill stations at some of the schools with graphics highlighting where our water comes from, the treatment process, et cetera. And this will also complement our reusable water bottle program that we currently have in place. So that's about it. Thank you very much for your time, and we really appreciate what you do for our school.
Thank you, Kathy. All right. Next up, we have Pamela Fallon, followed by Stephen Anderson.
Hello, my name is Pamela Fallon. I'm the Coordinator of McKenzie School District in Blue River. And I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about how our school is going. And recently, the kids just came in at the end of April, and it's been DSL, and there's still some on that. The newest program that the kids are really excited about is the sixth grade Future Energy Program. And they are, they want to aid and rescue and learn from the world, climate change and global warming. And here's some of their little ideas. And it's nano gold, nano wire batteries, Artemis Project, which is helium-3 that replaces nuclear power plants and a safer fusion reactor, not radioactive and produces no dangerous waste. New wind turbines called Ice Wind that last a very long time. Hydroelectric cars that do not let out greenhouse gases, but still the efficiency of a gasoline-powered vehicle. Floating solar farms creating huge amount of electricity without using land or real estate. Ocean wave energy, converting kinetic energy into electricity. Reduce rice methane emissions by bringing the rice up and raising it above the water. And new cellphone technology. These are just some of the answers to global warming that the sixth grade want to do and are so involved in. If the students get finished with their projects soon, they'll go to the school board and do a presentation. But if not, then they're going to have a little recording of their presentations. And if you guys want to hear it, and I could send it to you as well. The second grade is working with propagating fern plants for our riparian zone. The first grade has worked on weather this year and discovered how different climate is and noticed that how the climate is changing by looking at their data from years before. We are starting on a new garden next year and possibly by the end of the summer. There are many aspects of holding the school holding the school back from its environment this year. The fire area is still being addressed and outside workers and trimmers and chippers are always there, always there. We couldn't get any stream study in this year because they are still down there and there are no paths anymore down there and none of the riparian zone or anything. And so that's something that we are tending on. Next year, the community will help us and everybody will help us get everything planted and back up again. We'd also like to join the Solar Challenge when this COVID is down and Governor Brown accepts those terms. Unfortunately, we have been not, we didn't get to Salmon Watch. I wish we could have done a virtual one because it was so injured where we usually go. The third grade is working on land and water and they're weathering and ocean building dams. And we really wanted to go on a dam tour of Lieber, maybe next year, I suppose. And the middle school are making pollinating garden that goes with our new garden going in. It should have worked really well. And they're working with the US Forest Service on that. We hope the whole school and some community will help repair the riparian zone. It's not the COVID challenge, which is, most of our staff have been vaccinated for. It's a hard nine months with many efforts. Recover the fire devastation. Students will speak out about their lost homes and pets and items still. It's not an easy task for us at the school, but they are strong and work hard. And our community is back and we're trying to get back to everything that we had before. We have lots of teachers that have lost their homes and trying to build it again. So it's been quite a project. But I want to thank you for letting me on and letting you know what's going on.
Thank you very much, Pamela. Last up, we have Stephen Anderson.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Yep, we can hear you.
Well, I'm in the immediate impact area of the 40th and Patterson Water Storage Project. You've heard from me before. I would like to begin with a quote from an E-Web Commissioner last September. Quote, "We are under mandate from the state to have College Hill removed very quickly. It's a very time-critical project," unquote. So now suddenly, years of careful planning have been thrown out, apparently despite the immediate residents of this site at 40th and Patterson, who simply asked you to change the tank sequence and save some precious habitat for a decade or more. Please, Commissioners, don't abdicate your responsibilities to us. Look at the total water system of Eugene. Why have you changed the plan that's been decades in creating? It appears the General Manager arbitrarily decided to suddenly change direction and stick South Eugene with extra years of construction and all the inconvenience that will cause with absolutely no input from the citizens concerning the dangerous traffic impacts and disruption to our neighborhoods. Ask yourselves, why are you overbuilding in South Eugene? All the while, there is an actual danger to residents at College Hill and Hawkins Heights in the event of an earthquake. We are spending all this extra public money now when College Hill should have already been replaced. Building just the one tank will take much less time and means less chance of a long overdue earthquake impacting those other neighborhoods. Please reconsider this staff decision to build two tanks on this site. It's obvious we have lost our battle to save our marvelous trees and habitat that belong to us all. But do keep in mind, the only reason you're able to do this with little public pushback is the pandemic. South Eugene citizens are going to be outraged when they discover what you're doing. Please build one tank as per the original plan because once the public becomes aware of your arbitrary change of plan, hang on to your hats. That's it.
Thank you. The public testimony period for this meeting is now closed. And at this time, Commissioners are given the opportunity to comment if they choose. So you can raise your hand if you have a comment. John Borowski.
Thank you. And thank you, guys, for testifying. As a new Commissioner, being able to hear what the E-Web grants do in our school system is very enlightening. And I'm really happy to hear the impact that it has on the youth of our region. And so thank you for giving us that update. I look forward to learning more about it in the future. But thank you again for all you do.
Great. For any other Commissioner? I'm not seeing anyone raise their hands.
President Brown has his hand up for the President.
Great. John Brown.
Thank you. I would like to echo John Borowski's comments, too. And I think I asked for that, wondering where the, you know, how we were spending the money because I thought it was still in the budget. And I think that's a very worthwhile program. I know I was on the board when these programs were on the cutting block. And we had some pretty long and hard discussions about them, but I think they're very worthwhile. And I really like it when people come and tell us what they're doing, you know, and they don't wait to come to us when they're asking for something or something else. They come and it really helps me get to a decision a lot easier when they say, "This is what we're doing. This is how we're doing it." And be able to see Salmon Watch and Solar Challenge and all those things. And so thanks to the three of you for enlightening us on what you're doing. And thank you for all you do. Thank you.
Frank.
Yes, President Schlossberg. I know I mentioned this in my General Managers Report, but I'll mention it again since we had public testimony with regards to the grants. Annually, an annual report grant is filed by each school district. We typically get that in August. And so you will receive that. That'll be part of our Q3 report to the Board. We'll just add all three of those as the appendices to that report. So that'll provide more detail on an annual basis.
Great. I just want to say kudos to the school districts for figuring out how to pivot to virtual learning with this stuff. I know that it hasn't been easy, and I'm sure the teachers have appreciated it. And I'm super proud that we've helped fund these programs. So if there isn't anybody else, I don't see any other hands raised, then we'll move on to Board Action Item, Agenda Item Number Four, Approval of Consent Calendar A.
I move to approve Consent Calendar A.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 All right. That passed unanimously. We'll move right along to Approval of Consent Calendar B.
Move to approve.
I think that John Brown is trying to second, but you're muted.
I'm trying, well, I'm trying to pull an item.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead.
I want to pull Resolution 2111, number five.
Great. All right. Hang on. One thing about doing these meetings virtually is having to go back and forth between screens. All right. So just if somebody can remind me, do we vote on the remainder or do we discuss that one first?
So normally, we would vote on the remainder, but that Consent Calendar B only had one item in it, of which President Brown is batting 100% this evening. So we can entertain any questions. I don't know if Deborah Hart is on the line. She had some conflicts this evening, but I do know that Adam Rue is also available.
I am here.
Just a clarifying question. I had asked a pre-meeting question about if this additional $7 million, when it was said it could be used for habitat, you know, restoration and things. And then you said in your response, it can be used because of the timing to backfill, you know, to kind of cover it. But I'm not sure I got the answer I was looking for. I was looking for it. So is this in addition to the money that we've already approved? Or is this money just going to be used to backfill it and we're going to have an additional $7 million in the reserve?
This this is only about timing. So we're not going to spend an additional amount. The is that clarifying?
Well, yeah, just so I just I'm just trying to keep track of what pots of money we're putting into the Mackenzie. And I wanted to see if this is an additional $7 million bucks that's going up the river. Great. I mean, why isn't it 14? But you know me, I just I'm kind of keeping track of how much money we're going to do. And I'd love it if we're going up the river, but it sounds like it's just going up the river and then coming right back down once we get the revenue from the meter fee. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, that's what I needed. So I'll move to adopt Consent Calendar B if there's no other questions.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 All right. That passes unanimously. All right. We are now on General Business Items, Agenda Item Number Seven, Information Services Technology Investment Planning. Travis is gonna lead us.
Hi. Thanks, President Schlossberg. Good evening Commissioners, thanks for having me. I'm excited to be here to talk about technology. Just for the record, my name is Travis Keneb and I'm the Chief Information Officer. Go ahead and move to the next slide, Holly. So as you can see, we're going to talk about Goal 4C today and I've got it here. I won't reread it to you, but I thought what might be important to do is to just do a little bit of a level set about how Information Services is structured here at E-Web and where the work we're doing is and how we kind of operate. So we have two sides of our division, an IS Operations Side and an IS Business Solutions Side. The Operations Side is responsible for all of our servers, storage, networking, this team's environment that we get to do our board meetings on. That side of the division really supports that technology as well as our phone systems and user experience. So client desktops, laptops, et cetera. And so as we're talking about 10-year spending and budgets, I thought it would be appropriate to put that the operational side has about $2 million in receipts and that covers all of the maintenance and support on our servers, storage, networking devices, our Office 365, so email, Word, Excel, PowerPoint, SharePoint, Teams, all adds into that. And then we're on about a $1.2 million capital, type one capital run rate for replacement and maintenance of those systems. So we try to replace, technology moves a little bit quicker than the utility and we try to replace our systems more on about a five-year cycle. And so that 1.2 million is what we've kind of moved into. It's kind of a sweet spot that we can maintain our systems, but we're not biting off more than we can chew every every year. And then we spend about $200,000 a year on desktops. So that's again, the laptop replacements, miscellaneous software, that type of thing to support the utility. And on the Business Solutions Side, so this is where we, the IT Division or IS Division supports things like Banner CIS. So that's our customer information system, Enforce Smart Stream. And no, that's not a typo. It's just a mouthful to say it's just the name of the company. And so that's tools that we provide financial, Deborah and her financial team to manage our budgets. Oracle Work and Asset Management, pretty self-explanatory there. That's where we track assets and work orders. And the list goes on and on and I've got several here. There's probably in the hundreds if we count it all, all of those up. And so those, we have a about a one and a half million dollar annual license and maintenance fee on all of that software. And then we've got $20 million earmarked in our 10-year capital plan for replacement of our enterprise systems. And to put that into perspective, that's about 5% to 7% of that type two budget for the overall utility. Let's go ahead and advance, Holly. So I'm going to start by reading this definition and Gartner is a company, they're a research company and they're kind of the gold standard for benchmarking and providing information around technology. They define Legacy Application as an information system that may be based on outdated technologies, but is critical to day-to-day operations. And so if you remember back from the first slide, these applications are similar to the ones that were listed there. And if we start with Smart Stream, that budgeting software, we can see that it's about 30 years old. But we can also see that it's tracking, you know, $240 million in O and M budget and almost $300 million in revenue budget every year. So I think we can agree that that's critical to our day-to-day operations and we could probably slap the legacy tag on that application. Moving on to CIS is about 20 years old. Again, that's our customer information system, tracking all of our customers, generating around $30 million a month in receipts and generated $1.3 million or $1.3 billion bills, excuse me, in 2020. So again, day-to-day operations, critical, 20 years old. We're going to slap legacy on that application as well. And as we move on to WAM, we're tracking $1 billion in assets in our asset and management tool. We've got about 1,000 work orders in there, 1,600 open purchase orders. Again, critical to the business and at a decade old, I can assure you in a technology world, that's outdated. And so legacy again, as we move to GIS and and I kind of breezed over that. That's our Geographic Information System. UltiPro is our workforce management system. So for HR, where we do do our pay time or our time tickets and workforce management and recruiting, excuse me. And then AMI, of course, is support the AMI infrastructure. And so those applications are modern and definitely critical to day-to-day business, but by definition, we wouldn't put the legacy tag on there. And so I want to talk a little bit about two, what it means to have all these separate systems and how important they are to us and how we have to manage them and the effort it takes to manage them. And so as an example, those 1,000 work orders that are in WAM, if we want people to be able to charge time to that in UltiPro, then we have to build an integration. And so that's just a way to connect the two systems together. So then people will see that work order in UltiPro and be able to charge their time to that appropriately. But then you also have to babysit that, right? And, you know, with WAM, if somebody creates a work order, it ends up in UltiPro and people charge time to it. And then all of a sudden we realize, oh, we, you know, we messed up or something happens and we want to delete that work order. At a WAM, you have to do all that cleanup and that requires experts in all of the different technologies and experts from the business to be able to support that. And then when you add on the legacy piece to that, that just adds exponential complexity. And I've been trying to figure out a good example for this and I can't without, I don't have a great one. And so I'm going to try this as an analogy and you guys can tell me if I'm way off base. But I remember growing up, I'd go to my grandmother's house and she had these two-pronged outlets in her wall, but then she'd buy a three-pronged appliance. And so she had to have these adapters. So then the new technology could talk to the old wiring in the house. And but then you lose the capabilities that that third prong provides. And we're in a similar situation here. We have to make UltiPro that's modern, talk to this old system, WAM, and it makes things incredibly difficult. So getting data in, using data between the systems, but then also when we want to pull that data out to provide information so the utility can do the good work that it's doing. We have to write and maintain well over 400 custom reports, again, that take experts from all these different areas. And these reports can take anywhere from two hours to three weeks to develop, just depending on the complexity of them. And then again, you're still maintaining all of those, those relationships between the systems. And and it's difficult to find one expert that can help across the whole board. So as you might guess, where I'm talking and we're talking about where we think we need to invest money, it's in these legacy systems, the Smart Stream, CIS and WAM is is these critical business applications. And, you know, I want to be clear, there's it's tough to even think about an ROI on these systems. It's just tools that you need to run the utility. They're they're just tools that we have to have. We just rely on technology so much these days that we just have to have these tools. And so now we need to find the right way to modernize these tools to be the most efficient as possible. You know, and and I can't leave this slide without this bottom bullet point. I don't know if you've been seeing the news, there's been some cyber hacks or cyber attacks out there. And without modern security tools and security controls, it just makes that the the risk that much greater. So let's go ahead and move to the next slide because I want to talk a little bit about a recommendation of where we want to go. And I'll just draw your attention to this green box here on the right-hand side. An Enterprise Resource Planning, again, going back to Gartner, that Enterprise Resource Planning is defined as the ability to deliver an integrated suite of business applications. And so this is kind of a is a proposed solution or a recommended solution to this problem. So it does two things for us. And I know this a little bit of an I chart and I'm sorry. But there's two things this does is this allows us to modernize our systems. But an ERP is essentially a consolidated package of tools and applications. It's all integrated with a single backend, so it's got a single database. So now I don't have to write these custom adapters. And I don't have that risk of having modern tools that turn to legacy and trying to maintain that modern connectivity and dealing with old systems and new systems. We're able to maintain a kind of a level playing field across all of those systems. And you can see I've highlighted in blue where I feel like we need to spend our time right away is with Work and Asset Management, Customer Care and Financials. And that's those three systems that we've deemed as legacy on previous slides. And so, but then when you have those systems all integrated, it gives me the ability to lean into consultants when it's necessary to help us make that connection between our work orders and our financial system. I don't, I no longer have to try to integrate outside of a package to deal anymore. Obviously, we're going to gain security, enterprise security, enterprise management. If you look on the left side of this, and I know it's probably tough to read, but that says Analytics and Reporting. It's going to allow us to empower our our customers, my customers, who are the the E-Web employees, to pull this data out that they need to provide them with information to make good decisions. You think about time of use and billing options. Now we can provide these great reports and tools that they can self, do some self-help, right? And we don't have to come back to IT experts for every time they want to pull new data or or make a change to that system. So getting there is difficult, you know, why aren't we there already? I mean, it's it's difficult to get there. And Holly, if we move to the next slide, we can kind of talk about why it's difficult. Because if you look at the top right here, we're going to have to fix this problem while we're moving. We still need to run a utility. We need to still provide reliable power, clean water and continue having that revenue and doing billing and all of those things while we're trying to replace these core systems. And so, but why are we doing this is important too. And and technology is what I grew up doing and that's been my whole career. But really, I'm here representing the utility's needs. They've come to IT and said, we need these things, we need to be able to do these things. And so really, the answer to that is getting these systems modernized, getting them consolidated and having that single backend. You know, some of these things are maybe silly, but it's going to be a painful adventure. You know, we're going to have to be disciplined. We're going to have to realize that we have to give employees headroom to do this good work, to migrate to these systems and not ask them to do their 40-hour week job and then also be a part of a project team to move this forward. We have to have this mindset that a that this package deal is the right tool for E-Web as opposed to going out and doing best-of-breed customer system or best-of-breed asset management system because you still have the integration points that you have to deal with when you go and do that. And then, of course, we want to continually improve our processes. And you can imagine having 30-year-old software and 20-year-old software that we've adapted business processes to fit the age of the systems. And we do things differently in the utility because we're hamstrung by these systems. And we have to look at the, take this as an opportunity to improve those processes and really use those modern tools when we get there. So we can go ahead and jump to the next slide, Holly. So we have a vision. We have, we want to modernize our business utility applications in alignment with strategic objectives and business continuity. And so, you know, again, IT is recommending or IS is recommending an ERP solution, but it's not a silver bullet. You know, you can give me the best socket wrench in the world and it's still not going to hammer in a nail as well as a hammer does, right? We have to use this tool appropriately. We have to have good data to to go in before you're going to get good data out. And so we have to look at what what we do as we modernize these systems and how we go about it. And so I have some guiding principles here, utility specific. The tool that we select and how we modernize these tools has to be specific to a utility and the needs of a utility. But not just the application, but any partners that we pull in because we're going to need support from external consultants. And those consultants need to have experience in the utility world as well. They need to understand our business process. They need to understand what we're doing so they can support us in this effort is is to the best of their ability. I've got commercial off the shelf. We don't want a custom-developed application. We want something that we can purchase and implement. We don't, we can't think of ourselves as so unique that we need something custom-developed for us. But we also have to be aware that we also have an electric and a water utility and we need something that works for both of those utilities. And so we have, you know, which is going to be challenging. The next bullet is enterprise class and that's obviously, you know, that's a technology word. Sometimes I get carried away, but we have $1 billion of assets. We're generating a million bills out of CIS. We're in enterprise class. We're not a good candidate for a niche player. And so we have to select the right tool for the right job. And then supportable, we have to be able to find staff, you know, we have to train our staff to support this, both IT staff as well as the utility staff. But we also have to have the ability to lean into consultants when it's appropriate and have a good consulting base. If we look at CIS, it's a banner tool, it's called Banner CIS. It it's a it's a technology that it's almost impossible to find external consultants to help with that. It's kind of a dying technology. And then you think about finding somebody that can do that and then also integrate with these other applications. You can understand it's difficult. And so when we're looking at these new tools to modernize our systems, it has to be supportable. And again, the right enterprise planning solutions, so the package has to be correct. It has to be the right fit for E-Web, not necessarily the each system being the best of breed. You know, my second to last bullet here is is a lofty goal, but I'm excited about it. 90% meet 90% of the business and utility core requirements. And so the reason that that's a lofty goal is because we've got 30 years and 20 years and of customization of our existing applications. And so we really want to find a tool that we can not have to customize, that we can just configure to meet our needs. And if we can do that at 90-plus percent, we're going to be very much better or very much better. Words are hard sometimes. We're going to be far better off in the future of being able to continue to support this application and use this tool appropriately. And then we want to enable the utility to adopt a more extensive mobile workforce. And what I mean by that is not just telecommuting, not just COVIDian times, but we want assessors when they're out assessing storm damage to have technology at their fingertips where they can see, have access to maps and have access to where a pole is and where, you know, where it is on a map and how to get to it. And we want them to be able to have access to customer information. God forbid, there's a, you know, a dangerous dog in a in a yard. We don't want them to just march into that during a storm and get bit. We want them to have that information at their fingertips when they're out there in the field. And so we need this tool to to enable that mobile workforce. And so then from a timeline perspective, here we are today, getting to share this great information with you all. And and again, it's just exciting time for me. And then we need to go directly to an assessment and planning phase where we see, have some external help. Tell us where we're at. How, you know, are we in bad shape or, you know, with 30-year and 20-year-old systems? Are we in great shape? Are we in decent shape? And then we need to plan and kind of decide where do we start? Do we start with our financial system? Do we start with our customer information system? Do we do them both? Do we try to do all three at the same time? But really, again, and back to project management, that's, we need to develop a good scope, schedule and budget to move forward with. And then we want to come back later this year and get board approval. Again, we've got this 20 million that's earmarked in our initial conversations. We think that that's a sufficient amount, but we want to do more than just earmark it. We want to make sure that we have the board's approval to move forward to continue modernizing this system. But then we want to kick that project off in 2022. And so we're doing a lot of, you know, there's a lot of work to happen between now and then to make that happen. And so if we go to the next slide, really, we're just at a summary. And then I want to, you know, give you all opportunity to ask any questions that I can hopefully answer for you. But really, summary is we've got some legacy systems that we have got to modernize. There's just no two two ways about it. We, from a security standpoint, from an enterprise management standpoint, from an agility and ability to provide good information to the utility, we just have to do something with those systems. And again, our recommendation or my recommendation from an IS perspective is that we look at a an Enterprise Resource Planning tool that allows us to be more agile and allows better self-service from my customers, again, the the utility. And so that's about all I had for you today. I'm sure I missed several things, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. And Sonya, I see your hands up.
Mindy, is that all right if I jump in? I don't know if you have anybody else in the queue. Okay. All right. Thanks. Great presentation, really appreciate the, oh, I'm getting an echo. Plug in some. I don't know why I have to do that all of a sudden. I can still hear myself. Didn't help at all. Didn't help at all. Is there anybody else not on mute? Sometimes that if they have their, not mic'd, it will echo back whoever's talking. Okay, it's gone. Great, thank you, whoever fixed that. All right. So, uh, thank you very much for the presentation. I really appreciate the timeline and the outline of which systems and, and why. I have a few specific questions about the previous systems that we went through. I think that that was related to these IS systems. Is that true or is that not true? The Cisco work that we did that kind of failed? Is this a redo of that work or is it completely different?
So, I, I'm not sure I'm, are you, do you mean we've started to do that?
Yeah, I, I can jump in a little bit, Travis, if, if you want. So, so Sonya, the, um, the CIS system that we embarked on a few years ago is, um, this, this would be ultimately a replacement of that. We deferred a little bit and broke off some chunks to do some commercial off-the-shelf billing as a piece of that. We felt like we could take some components of a customer system and do it in the meantime. But this would be inclusive of that. So the, the ancient CIS system that he's referring to, written in the last millennia, is actually the one that you're referring to. So yes.
Okay. And how does that connect to the customer's billing system that is getting revamped? Is this a part of that or is it completely separate? How does that play into this mix? Because that's launching here in any day now, right?
Yeah. So the, the CIS system is definitely the backend for that. And all of the customer data and all the billing, um, the new portal relies heavily on CIS for that. And just like everything else, we've had to write a custom adapter. Again, that two-prong to three-prong adapter had to be written for that. And so how this would play into it is, you know, we would, once we modernize CIS into, you know, whether it's an ERP or what, however we modernize it, then we would just have to make the, the adjustments to the customer portal to talk to the new CIS system. And, and it uses modern technologies, just like any replacement to CIS would.
Yeah, that's, Commissioner Carlson, the example that he's pointing to is, is actually a really good example of a legacy system. We, we had some, some billing and payment systems. The AutoPay, for example, was so old. That's part of the reason that customers are now having to re-enter and re-sign up for AutoPay, was we had several different versions of that, all ancient. Whereas now they're going to be on modern platforms. And if we replace the CIS with a modern platform in the background, you won't have that, that custom integration problem that you did with the legacy system.
Okay. Okay. So I, I think I kind of get that, although it's hard to, you know, know specifically unless you're in some of those systems. I guess my, my last question then is how will we ensure that the new product that is chosen will be successful, whereas the last one was not? So, and, and I know Travis, if you were involved in that piece, that may be a little bit difficult for you to, I don't know. Maybe Frank can jump in, but any insights there?
Travis, try and answer this first and then I'll jump in, because I.
No, I'll take her back at it. So, so Sonya, I, or Commissioner Carlson, I started with E-Web about five years ago and had been focused on the operational side. And our operational side today, based on the team that we assembled there, is pretty rock-solid. Now, I'm not saying it's perfect, but we've gone from several outages to almost no outages based on the infrastructure. And so I guess what I'm trying to say is I understand technology and I've got a, a pretty good track record there and hope and know that I'll carry that forward to the next iteration, right? Which is this other side of the IT business. And I've built a, started assembling a team and then building a team to support that effort. And I think you'll be pleasantly surprised with the, with the outcome there that we do. And I know that I have got, you know, I've got support from my ET colleagues. And again, going back to change management, we'll make sure we have good support from the utility before we try to start this effort. And we're going to knock it out of the park.
I mean, IT systems are not easy under any circumstances. And with something as complex as the utility, I'm sure that that's going to be challenging no matter what. So it sounds like you're saying that the, the team will be different and that will be the change that we need to make this successful versus the last go-around.
Commissioner, I would also add that it's, the ERP approach where you're actually creating a, a, an organizational-wide capability is, is historically different from what E-Web has done. We have typically taken selective best-of-breeds. Some of that is because departments didn't trust other departments. They wanted to have their own thing. So they wanted the best of the best is what they wanted. And then they would get that, and then it would force all of this integration to have happened, which is, which is also even what happened before, to the point where there's so much custom integration that we become a software house and, and really we're a utility. So I, I think we didn't have the appetite for it. We probably didn't have the teamwork in place like we do today. And I didn't think we really had the capability to take on an ERP type of system. It's ultimately the best approach. And the executive team kind of had to raise their hand and say, yep, that we're in this together, which means I might not get the best of something, but it's, if it's the best for everybody, then that's what we're going to go with. So I think a number of factors play into that.
Okay. So everybody wins a little, everybody, you know, compromises a little bit. But ultimately, the end goal is that all of the systems talk to one another and connect in a way that doesn't require more and more and more integrations and custom reports and everything to make the systems function.
Right. And a technology path forward, because, you know, we can do this today and then someone's going to come along and curse us in 10 years because we've done something that, oh, it's, it's kind of what we're living with now, which is, oh, it wasn't upgradable. It wasn't supportable. So it has to be all those things. And I think the ERP approach is, is the best way to get there.
Great, thank you.
Go for it, John Borowski.
Thanks. And thanks for the analogies and, and, because reading through the, the AIS, it was like, oh, gosh, I got about halfway through and then realized, oh, I'm lost on this paragraph. Better start over again to try and figure out where I'm at. So that's why I'm glad that there's people like you that can, can do this. Yeah, I think I see, you know, you got the two-prong plug going to the three-prong plug. And I think where, you know, you're at a six-prong ethernet cable now, and we're probably going to a Bluetooth technology with this new one. And in, in five years, it's going to be something else. And I think that that's just something you have to live with, with technology. You need to learn, adapt and, and keep, keep growing with it. You know, the people that are selling these things, you know, you mentioned that, that, you know, as far as the security and stuff like that, after so long, they just stopped supporting it. And that's how they make their money is by, you know, you stop doing the support and have to sell a new one. That's why I have Office 365 instead of, you know, Windows 7, right? That's, that's the market plan. So I'm, I'm on board with this. I think that it will be evolving and we'll probably have this, another board will have this conversation in five to seven years. And another board will have this conversation in 10 to 15 years. And another board will have this conversation in 30 to 50 years. It's just an ongoing thing with technology. So unfortunately, that's the way it is. And I think that this approach is the best fit today. You know, tomorrow, there's going to be a better fit. And the day after that, somebody's going to come to the door with a better fit to that. So go with your best plan forward and I'm, I'm in support. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Commissioner.
Borowski, I was just going to add, if I could, you know, wanted to, to Commissioner Carlson's question as well, you know, what's different today? One of the biggest differences I've noticed in the last few years is a cultural one. And that's that we, E-Web used to, for many years and probably decades, thought, oh, we're unique. We are special. We cannot take some off-the-shelf program. We need our own program. And yet, when you do that, you create all these custom issues. And I think we've recognized that there are people out there that do this for, you know, 95% of the other utilities in the world, and why should we be different? We, at some point, need to change our processes if that's what it takes to get something that we can support going forward. I, I think we have the cultural appetite to do that now. I wouldn't have said that 10 years ago, I, or even five years ago. I, I think the work we've done around continuous improvement and processes, we have recognized that in order to make things like this work, we have to be willing to grow up and, and change from a process perspective.
John Brown.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Travis. Having lived through the WAM thing, and I know that when we implemented that, I think it was 10 years ago, it wasn't the smoothest process in the world. And I noticed you said five to eight years to integrate this, to get this up and, and running. And with technology and changing quicker now, apparently 10 years was the life of WAM at that time. And that's why we're having to address it now. How are we going to deal with the implementation of this if it takes five to eight years to do it, to integrate all of these new systems? And the technology is changing more rapidly than a 10-year life. How are we going to make sure that we don't have something that's half through its economic life by the time we implement it?
Yeah. And part of that, Commissioner Brown, is making sure that we select the right tools. So just to clarify, WAM itself is still very relevant. And there's new versions of WAM that have just not, we just, that, that just were never kept up. For whatever reason or the other, we've, we've stayed on this old model of WAM. But when we look at these enterprise ERPs, you know, I hate to say a name, but you look at something like SAP. I mean, it's been around for years and years and years, and it continues to be developed and evolving. And that's why we feel like that that's the right approach. Because if we try to select a one-off over here and a one-off over there, you're right. By the time you get this one off installed, then it's already ready to be updated in order to keep up with the next one. And so that's why, one of the main reasons we feel like an integrated solution is the right one is because it drags all of the pieces along with it. And we also need to look at our approach of where we go with this. And we have to be willing to look at the cloud where it's appropriate. I think just from a resiliency standpoint and a mobile workforce standpoint. And you get in a position where you don't have a choice. You know, we're on O365 now and Outlook gets updated and Exchange gets updated. And we're kind of along for the ride. And so that's part of that new mindset and that cultural shift that we have to be ready to be along for the ride as we go to a point when these tools are selected.
Commissioner Brown, I would also add that we, we may not, you and I may not be around to actually get one of the biggest benefits of this. And I don't mean, you know, alive. I mean, you know, but working at the point, at that point. It's, I, I think it's going to take five to eight years to do it this time because we have so much customization. I think the next time it's going to take three to five years. And eventually you get on this sort of automatic cycle, which is a lot less painful and it's a lot more dynamic and you're a lot more modern all the time. This first one is particularly tough because of the hole that we've dug through the years. And so I think some of the benefit here of commercial off-the-shelf, using the cloud, taking an ERP approach is for the next generation or two to enjoy as opposed to me and, and you enjoying at this point. So I think, yeah, five to eight years this time. I think probably three to five next time. And then, then there's elements of it that will just almost be automatic. It'll, it'll be part of the, probably an O and M cycle at that point.
Okay. Well, thank you. I'm in full support of this moving forward. Thank you.
All right. Matt, I don't know if you wanted to say anything?
Sure. I'll just take a moment. Thank you. Thanks, Travis, for materials and the presentation. It made my head hurt just thinking about all the ways in which things are tied up. I've seen E-Web projects and initiatives be hamstrung by software limitations in the past. So I appreciate the initiative here and the dedication to getting it right. This utility couldn't function without all of the, the software working well. And I appreciate the initiative to make it work as well as we possibly can. So yeah, thank you so much. Grateful you're leaning into this. I think we'll be better for it on the other end. Thanks.
Thank you.
Great. And just one last word for me is that I think it's pretty exciting and I appreciate this, the big-picture integrated approach. So I look forward to seeing what you bring back to us in a few months.
Great. Thanks, everybody, for your time. This has been fun.
Thank you. All right. We are now on agenda item number eight, capital improvement plan assumptions and principles.
I think that's Frank and Rod.
Yep. Pass it to Rod.
Good evening, commissioners. Happy June. Well, Travis is having fun presenting. I should have had him just roll onto this one because he provided some great examples of some of the things I'm going to talk about. So last month, we presented the, the current status of the capital programs and projects. Next month, Wally and Tyler and Karen are going to come and talk about the proposed 10-year capital plan, the next version of it. Tonight, I wanted to give an information-only kind of presentation to go over some of the assumptions and ways that we, we build the capital plan. And hopefully this information will, will help prepare you in your review process when you, when you get that big budget packet in July. So, next slide, please. For a little context, and, and as Travis pointed out admirably, that, that we have over a billion dollars in water and electric assets. And those assets, they need a lot of care and feeding. And to accomplish that, there's probably about 50% of our annual budgets are geared towards capital, if you pull out the power purchase piece of it. So, so there's a significant amount of money that goes into our, our budgets that's related to the capital plan. So it deserves a lot of scrutiny. One of the things I kind of wanted to point out too, there's a really tight tie between capital and O and M. And I really, you know, there's not a lot of time to explain that at this point. But I do want to point out though, that the strategic plan helps tie it together, you know, how, how big our capital plan is and how our O and M spending is in terms of our mission and our long-term financial planning. So, so this is a pretty important piece of work to, to pay attention to. So next slide, please, Pauline. So when you get your, your July board packet, there'll, there'll be a backrounder. And then attached to that will be a spreadsheet, because, because we all, engineers love spreadsheets and so do accountants. So you're, you're getting ganged up on here. But the spreadsheet will basically look something like this. And across the top, you know, left to right will be the, the, the 10 years moving up in time. The very top section is the inputs, the funding sources. The, the columns on the left then, or the, the categories on the left are, are the categories that we use to break down the capital plan. Confucia or whatever color you want to call that, I've highlighted the 10-year totals. So one of the things I'll be looking for at the July meeting is some concurrence from the board around the totals. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a bit. Next slide, please. Just a few more details. Funding sources include income from rates, bonds, customer contributions and occasionally grants. One of the, the things you might see and notice is the customer contributions appear in both funding and expenditures because our, our policies, for instance, require the customers to pay for most of their own connections. So you'll see two items there, but there's all kinds of nuances like that within that plan that, that you can look at. The other thing I, I wanted to touch on a little bit is the, the capital reserves. They're set by a board-proved policy. And basically, they're, they're based on the yearly depreciation rates for each utility's assets. It's about $7 million for water and about $22 million for, for electric at this point. So across the bottom, you'll see the, the reserve buckets that are targeted and filled each year. And those reserves are used to help smooth out our spending levels and for unexpected expenses. And I'm sure Adam and Deb can tell you more, but next slide, please. Pauline? Thank you. So we. So we, we staff, maybe Frank, tend to toss around a couple of ways of categorizing projects. One is the E L one policy language, type one, type two, type three. And the other one is I introduced a little bit last month, the compulsory risk-based strategic kind of categories. In some ways, there, there's some similarities to them. I made a little table here that, that explains or cross-references, cross-references them a little bit. But what I wanted to point out is that the type one, type two, type three, they're, they are board, board requested, but they're very, much more useful in the, in the budgeting and and reporting kind of worlds and also in helping finance do some funding sourcing. The compulsory, risk-based and strategic are, are helpful from the staff engineering kind of world where it helps us sort out projects and choose projects, prioritize that kind of thing for work. So. Next slide please. Excuse me, got allergies today. Pauline's bad. Huh? No, previous. Oh, well, it's fine. Yeah. I just wanted to point out that we typically start the plan with compulsory work. And that's really work that's based on history. We, we've got a pretty good idea of what compulsory work looks like, how much regulatory work is, customer work, some of that kind of stuff. Then we look at the strategic choices that are made. Carmen Smith, for instance, was a strategic project at one point. And then on top of that, we, we then start putting in, in piecing together risk-based projects. And Wally says this all the time, we've got way more projects in our risk-based bucket than we, we can possibly do. So, so we need to put those in though to smooth out and meet our financial goals. So, next slide, Pauline. Thank you. So in July, the, like I mentioned, we'll, we'll ask for, for concurrence on next year's budget amount. Usually we, we talk about the five-year total and then we talk about the 10-year total. And concurrence with these totals just helps shakes, shape the budget for next year for very precise budgeting in the financial plan. And you'll see that come in November, December. And the five-year look helps with planning, direction, you know? What are we doing right now? Cause it takes usually two, three years in some cases to build projects, sometimes four, five and 10, kind of to Travis's point. Some of these are big, long-term projects. So, so these looks help us set the stage and move ahead with those kind of things. One of the things I was going to point out that, you know, at some point you have to spend a minimum amount of, of money on capital to, to keep sustaining the system financially. Typically though, we, we target a replacement cost versus a depreciation cost. So that's usually about one and a half to two to three times the amount of the depreciation cost. Kind of like if you get in a car accident, the car insurance company will give you a check, but you still have to pony up to, to get another car fee for value. So. The other side of it is the maximum size and that's limited somewhat by financial constraints, staffing, all the kind of things that, that are typical and not having enough money to do this, that or the other things. So, next slide please. So what is the right size of the plan? That I was asking you to look at, you know, how do you review the totals? How are we turning the dials? Well, there's a couple of ways you can look at this. One is to compare this year's plan to, to previous plans. And so Wally and Tyler will, will do a little bit of that. There's also the percentages of the compulsory and risk-based and, and strategic values and how they evolve through the 10-year plan. And so for instance, if you look at this one from the 2020 plan, or maybe it's 2019, the budget for 2020 shows about 22% of the strategic work being done in this water capital plan. And that's mostly AMI. If you go to the five-year total, the risk base goes up as the strategic goes down. So AMI is finished within that five-year period. And then if you move to the 10-year period though, the, the strategic piece of the, the second source becomes dominant again and pushes some of the risk-based spending out. So you can make the pie bigger or you can adjust things within that pie. Next slide please. So again, a, a great lead-in from Travis and his discussion about asset management. And asset management is a very important tool. And when you go to plan individual projects and programs, we have been targeting some asset management tools. We also do some long-term planning. But we've targeted, sorry, some asset management to some programs. So this, these two examples, one's our cable failure study we did and presented, I think a couple of years ago. And the other ones are our vehicle, our fleet maintenance. Gary Lynch has got an extremely detailed plan on asset, how to manage the, the fleet. And I think we presented this as well. But that helps guide spending within areas of, and it works very well for poles, pipes and vehicles, that kind of thing. Next slide please. Some of the major electric drivers. Right now is Carmen Smith relicensing is a, is a large, large chunk of the electric capital plan. Aging infrastructure is probably one of our, our biggest concerns moving ahead. We've had a lot of, of the, the grid installed in the 50s and 60s and 70s. Those are, all that equipment's becoming at end of life. So what do we do about that? The other things we look at is reliability trends and, and resiliency. So one of the things that I pulled up the trends for the last year for both the frequency and duration of outages. And both of those numbers are increasing. And that kind of goes along with our, our assets as well. There's a, one of the metrics you see in, in the financial reporting is called age of system. And it gives you an idea of, of how much your system is depreciated. But that number has risen from 57 to 62% on the electric side. And our target level 60%. So that indicates we, we're not quite spending enough on a financial basis to, to keep ahead of things. I mean, that's a, there's a whole subject in itself, but we'll go to the next slide. In the water, we use the, the master plan, the 10-year master plan that's required. And it has, it's full of benchmarks and, and all kinds of good practice and good studies. We also look at reliability, meeting benchmarks, that kind of thing. I just illustrated something here that we're, we realize our, our bench, we're a little bit of our A W W A benchmarks. And so can leak. So we're going to spend, propose spending a little bit more money on, on pipe replacements, for instance. And so we've got lots of data there that, that, you know, age of pipes, what kind of pipes it is. And it's more of that asset management kind of thing. Likewise, we also look at projects from resilience spine and emergency water supply. All these drivers are put together and can help us prioritize projects and which, which projects go out of the hopper and into the plan. So, next slide please. And I'll end with basically the, the idea that, you know, the E L one was set up to help monitor spending in the capital plan. And so you can look in the quarterly reports and see our, our spending and how it's going per project and for, per, per program. And the other thing in the quarterly report is we, we report on the yearly total progress. So the budget year 2022 is nailed down. How are we doing on our spending within that? I think one of the things about the E L one that is nice is it helps you track those multi-year projects. Cause we have just a number of, of projects that are big projects that are important, but don't fit within a budget here and don't necessarily make sense within a budget here. So Carmen's a great example of that, AMI, you know, any number of those, those large whole figure budgets. So with that, I will stop and see if there's any questions or. Frank, you want to add anything that I missed?
Yeah, thanks, Brown. I was, I was just going to jump in a little bit. Some commissioners have been through this process before. Some of them, it's, it's a little bit new. So I wanted to highlight a couple of, of things that I think are a little bit different. Part of this is, is, you know, it's easy. If you look back the last few years, we've, we've had a pretty modest capital program. In some cases it had been reduced from the years before. Some of that was just our own scrutiny, recognizing that we wanted to divide up between things we had to do and things we chose to do. And until we figured that out more strategically. I, I think what you'll see this year is you'll, you'll see a pretty robust plan on both the water and the electric side. And so I, I don't want, what we do want you to do is to take a look at where that money is going and see if you can tie it to what we're trying to accomplish strategically, where we think the operational vulnerabilities are. And not just look at this as, oh, you know, here's eWeb trying to grab a bunch of money to, to do projects. We know that there's rate pressures. We, we are going to feel those this fall already. And so a couple of things to note, one is we have typically used the, the next year's capital for the budget. So for 2022, I think Rod mentioned that. One of the things we're doing this year also is we're doing a multi-year COSA so that we can give the board several years worth of views of pricing and rates, which means don't just pay attention to 2022, but also look at 2023, 2024. Look at the next few years as, as how we're spending on these various categories. And, and so, yeah, a few things just to, to look for. It'll be, it'll be a robust plan. We want to make sure you can tie it to the things that we need to accomplish. Some of those are pretty standard. The type one is the routine day-to-day, you know, you're changing out transmission mains, you're changing out poles. Type two are the very distinctive lumps in the oatmeal though. So you should recognize project names in, in that category, not just a category, but a, a project name. And it could be multi-year. So what we're trying to do today is just give you some tools to be able to, when you get this plan next month and you, you see the impacts on the long-term financial picture, that you take some time to dive in and look at the various categories and, in, in different ways. So that, that's what we were intending with today's presentation. Thanks, Rod.
Robust is a, is a code word for much, much more money. I don't know what Deb would call it, but.
I, I think John, I think a few of the commissioners have heard that before. So they, I think they, they have the decoder ring out and are looking up robust and say, oh, okay, you know, we're asking for more money. I think that was it on the presentation, right? Right, Rod? Next question.
All right. I see some hands up. I saw John Brown's hands up and I also saw Matt. John, go ahead.
Thanks Rod for the presentation. I was here when the term robust came about. And we had kind of a, a long discussion with previous boards about this being a, the system being way overbuilt, for lack of a better term. And somebody said how, you know, our system was bigger than the city of San Francisco's and things such as that. How are we going to be, you know, as a laid board, and I, I'm not going to, I don't know what you're replacing is necessary. But how am I going to be assured that we're not replacing things that may not need replacing? I heard that we had some stations we don't need and we have infrastructure that was overbuilt. And if our service territory isn't going to expand, maybe it's going to be densify a little bit. How are we going to be assured that that doesn't happen again?
Well, I'm not sure about again, but that's a great question, right? How, how much do you spend? And so one of the things that, that we've been working towards is tying reliability to, to, to our system. And, and then our, our system to, to aging and replacement. So that's part of that asset management we're talking about. But we're also doing some high-level planning. So Tyler's got, for the electric system, which is what you're talking about being somewhat overbuilt. He's, he's got, I mean, they're doing all kinds of things with heat maps. And you can see how old stuff is and where it's starting to fail. So there's, there's a number of things that come into play that Tyler and, and Wally will be talking to you about. But it's a great question.
I would add that to that, Commissioner Brown. I, I think it's really important for the board to ask, how much of this work is capacity related versus how much of it is related to sort of right sizing the system, making it more resilient? There's, there's some tension between two things. One of them is we have a bunch of stuff that was put in between 1950 and 19, in the 1970s. And so you have this, this lump of aging stuff that you know you have to deal with. And by the way, you have to replace it at today's prices, not the prices that you put it in at. So it's going to be in some cases more expensive. You can mitigate that some based on your system design and being able to optimize the system design. And those are the things that, that we will try to do and try and capture those, those in the plan. And it's how, how that, that tension works. But if, if you see projects that are, that are sort of classified as capacity checks, those are the ones that I, I think would be questionable, definitely good questionable by the board. There's other ones that might be resiliency related, those we know that are very strategic, we probably have to do those. But I think really trying to, to right-size the system in, in the midst of this sort of lump of aging infrastructure, it's going to, it's going to be tough. But I, I think when you get into it, we're just going to have to, especially the type two projects, those are the ones that, those tend to be more choice-related and strategic. So those are the ones that I would expect to get more scrutiny as to what the purpose of those project is. And that's what we would expect from, from the board.
Thank you.
I think just Travis did a great job of illustrating how he's, he's going through his process and his team and the maturity level. I, I would say that we're, and I totally agree with Frank, we're culturally, we're in a much better, in a much smarter spot than, than we have been in the past. So I, I think you'll see good, good, positive information that will, that'll be helpful.
Great. Matt?
Thanks, Mindy. I get my packet sent to me in the mail. Thanks to staff for sending that. I have looked all over in here and I can't find my decoder ring. Frank, maybe you could have one sent to me. I don't know. Thanks for the presentation, Rod, and the background materials. This is all precursor for the next discussion we're having about the CIP. I wonder, given the complexity and I suspect the length of that particular memo we're going to get from you, is it possible to get that a little more in advance of our meeting? And forgive me, because I understand like you may be at a point where you're, you know, the, the deadline as it is, is hard enough to meet. But if alternatively it's prepared and could come out to us, you know, with a few extra days to, to get through it, that'd be great. Not required, but you know, that's doable. And then the other, thank you. The other question I have is just how this relates to the integrated resource plan. Recognizing that's only electricity side, the CIP covers both sides. And, and it seems like the IRP is really mostly focused on purchases of, of power. It's not so much about infrastructure as I understand it. But I'm curious if the, if, how they relate together if the IRP informs the capital, capital improvement plan and how? And, and then what the timing looks like for that? If, if the CIP, if the IRP informs the CIP, on what timeframe does that happen?
Yeah, it, it certainly should inform the CIP, Commissioner McCray. So there's a number of things that I would expect to come out of an IRP and I'll get to the timing here in just a second. One of them is, is related to how you're going to procure, in, in our case, our electricity. Some of that can be through contracts and some of it can be through the investment or divestment divestitures in our own assets. So that's where you would have an impact on on the the capital plan. If we decided that we need to build out more resource for some reason, independent of where it is, and we're going to capitalize that, then that would have direct input to the to the long term CIP. Those I would likely classify at this point as probably type three, highly strategic projects. They are typically going to be very expensive. And they would be a long term commitment that the board would be making to that particular resource. And so now, we don't have a lot of type three capital in except for Carmen Smith, and we will also have some 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 investment in the canal at Lieberg, some of that for public safety, like we've talked about before. So beyond generation. The timing of the IRP is such right now that we will spend a lot of time in 2021 looking at consumption. We'll spend a lot of time looking at in 2022 of the characteristics of the generating resources that we need. And so probably early 2023 will be the actual finished integrated resource plan. So and and if you think about that, that means you're probably going to start to see impacts to the capital plan sometime, you know, it could be immediately after that, depending on the timeframe, especially with the Bonneville contract in 2028 expiring. And a decision on that probably 2025. So I I wish that we were a little bit further ahead on the integrated resource plan. But I'm not. I guess I wish a little bit further ahead, but but right now the work that we are doing will contribute to it around electrification and other things. So so, yeah, that'll give you a little feel for the timing. But yes, the IRP would inform the capital plan.
Great. Yeah, thanks for that, Frank.
As well, you know, the other thing that I would I would add Commissioner McCray is is the strategy also informs the capital plan, especially with relationship to resources. You know, one of the things that I I apologize, I sent out something on the on the mission of the utility very late today. I didn't expect to get a lot of comments back today. But one example that I use, the importance of particular words is right now, our mission is the delivery of electricity and drinking water, which means that generation is subservient to that. We don't talk about being a generator, which means we don't have to be according to our mission. Now, I don't know if the board is okay with that or not. Does the board really want to maintain a position proactively, independent of an IRP related to generation? So which can be a very expensive proposition when it comes to capital planning. And so the the strategy will definitely also inform the capital improvement plan.
I think just to add on to that, Commissioner, as well, that Megan Capper and Susan Ackerman aren't up in their office dreaming up integrated resource plans on their own. And so there's been a fair amount of discussion, especially around electrification and transmission and and some of those kind of things where you know, we we're 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 all working together to to make sure that we can accomplish some of those things and hit the goals for electrification. So we we have a lot of substation capacity. Our system has a lot of capacity. Poles and wires were were about right sized. In fact, we're a little short in some areas of town, but capacity wise, we're we're good. So how do we because it's it's to our benefit to use that capacity if it's there. So.
Yeah, thanks, Rod. And I I realize my question suggested that, but I certainly didn't mean to imply that that those, you know, the the CR, the capital improvement plan and the and the resource planning were working separately. I I could yeah, I can imagine they are well integrated. Appreciate that.
Go ahead, John.
Thanks. Yeah, I would definitely echo what Matt said about trying to get the the document out early. Especially if, do you think you're going to ask us to approve it next month as well? Question?
So go go ahead, Rod, if you want to answer that. I can answer it if you don't.
I'll go ahead. That's fine.
So Commissioner Borowski, it's I I wouldn't classify it as as approval per se. What what we do with with the feedback that we get next month is typically finance will start to run with if if the board says, yeah, we're comfortable with this. We will tip kind of ask for, are you comfortable with especially the year 2022? We can start to use that as the basis for our our budget work. Are you comfortable with the early years? I'll describe it as the early years now. We can start to do some project planning work and other things. It's more of, or if you come back and say, we're really uncomfortable with the direction you're going here, then we have to take that back. It's not a sort of this hard and fast, oh, we're approving the plan right now. It's it's good to go. It's more of a gauging point for us. Because really what you do is you ultimately, at the end of the year, sorry, at the beginning of, well, the beginning of the next year, you approve a capital budget and for both utilities and an O and M budget for both utilities. That's your ultimate control point. And then the rates that are generated from that.
Okay, great. Yeah. So for me, having the the first whack at it, if I could get it early that way, if I have questions, I can address those to staff rather than having to to ferret those all out in a in a three minute, you know, board meeting presentation. So as as early as it can get, that would be great. Then I guess the second question that I would have is where would you see the Lieberg Canal? As you, would that be a type two, a type three? And since it is dealing with water and generation, would it be in both buckets?
So, yeah, in reverse order, generation, all all that is in the electric utility. And so there's there's water's not a thing. It Lieberg's a little bit complicated for some respects because it could be O and M work as well. If we're removing canal or something like that, just repairing it as in kind could be $50 million of O and M. So it, we we recognize that whether it's in capital or O and M, it's still a big unknown for us. And so the, in part, some of the the robustness of the plan will include, you know, some some accordion room, some wiggle room there for us to flex with with Lieberg from our best guest at this point. And so you'll hear from us probably in a month or two, we're going to come back and talk to Lieberg to to the commissioners about Lieberg and some of the things that we're finding. We we don't quite know enough yet to to give you that full picture, though. And we may not for a couple of years, who knows?
I I would say, Commissioner Borowski, if there's a large capital component to it that could be depreciated, of course, you cannot depreciate an asset that's not there. Or, you know, there's there's some pretty hard and fast rules around what's expensed versus what's capitalized. If there is a large capital component, it would rise to the level of a type two simply because of the exposure that it would get. It's not part of some routine changing of poles or or wires or pipes. So it it would. But there is a really high likelihood that we are not adding capacity. We are not adding infrastructure. And the work that is done will not be meet the requirements of being capitalized, which which means it hits the books in the year of which you you do it as as you know. So it will likely have a very large O and M expense component to it.
And our O and M, is that bondable?
That is a good question. Typically, I I don't want to answer for finance yet. I can follow up with them. Typically, you you have to invest bonds in things that have some material asset value. And so typically, you would not be able to bond items that are expensed. Now, it might be, it might be eligible for some various grant type of funding. But I doubt that it would be bondable. I don't know if Deborah or Adam are still listening, but they could probably correct me if I'm wrong.
That's my understanding, but we can confirm.
All right. Thanks. Thank you.
All right. Any commissioners that haven't? Oops, I think I'm frozen. Think I froze there for a minute. Any commissioners who haven't had a chance? No. Okay, I guess I just want to say that when I look at our agenda for the July meeting, it's already pretty packed with some heady stuff. And so I just want to make sure that we are able to give enough attention to this. I want to say early on in the meeting because I don't know about the rest of you, but as the meetings go on, it gets a little bit harder to be as sharp. But anyway, I guess I'm partially in charge of setting the agenda. So I will make a note to myself that we will do this early on. But also just to note that we do have three really big topics, I think, on our July agenda. And that is it. Okay, so if there isn't anything more for this topic, we are going to take a five minute break. And then we'll come back. So we're going to come back at 7:16. Great. You see that some people are back. Not everyone, but I need to go turn off my air conditioner. Okay, I am back. And we are hang on. Moving on to agenda item. Number 10, headquarters buildings and associate associated real property disposition. Frank.
Yes, President Schlossberg. Good evening again, commissioners. This is Frank Lawson for the record. Next slide, please. So the purpose of the presentation this evening is just to give you just a brief update on the headquarters building and get some direction and counsel from the board on some potential next steps. Just a little bit of of background information. I did supply a background memo as part of this topic with a little bit of the history about the surplus declaration and some of the other activities that are that are taking place. Was built in 1988, so it's a little over 100,000 square feet. There is parking available somewhere kind of in the 225 parking spot range on the site. It's made up of multiple parcels. I believe there's nine parcels in in total. E web's board declared it surplus for utility purposes in November of 2018, which according to city code at that time, started a clock for negotiations with the city that had various different interpretations of the timeline. But the 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 longest period of time was five years for the city and E web to work their way through that process. More recently, though, as part of negotiating a surplus declaration and sale to the city for what's called the MGP site, which is south of the steam plant. We did have a provision in that purchase and sale agreement to where the city, if they signed that agreement and after we fulfill a few other provisional items, the city will release officially release their exclusive right to negotiate under that city code on the headquarters site. We have signed that agreement. And we're working through some of the things that we need to do relative to assumption of O and M responsibilities with some of our other counterparties. But that looks like it's going to take place. And so within the next month or so, probably, the city's right exclusive right to negotiate on the headquarters building will be dissolved. So that leaves the process here for what the board might want to do with the headquarters building or what you would instruct me to do. That is, we have a number of possibilities. I will mention here that our process has historically been to offer this first. If the board were to say we want to explore the sale of this property, like our other properties that we surplus, our first intention would be to contact other public agencies or agencies or companies that would be for the general public good as usually our first step, just. um, as usually our first step um, just um, just as a process note. Uh, go ahead with the next slide, please. So with that, um, knowing that there is the possibility upcoming shortly that we can uh, do with the headquarters building that of what we want to do with it, um, I would like to hear from the board as to which options you might be interested in in exploring. That could be uh, a limited sale. And what I meant by that was only to potentially certain public agencies. For example, um, moving to an just an open sale. If you want to um, divest of the property, if you want to explore further leasing, this is really just um, to give you some indication that there's um, uh, the possibility that we'll coming up shortly that we'll be able to do with headquarters what we want to. And I'd like to hear from the board what you might be interested in in pursuing. With that, President Schlossberg, I'll turn it back to you and see what questions and comments and direction I can get.
Great, is there anyone who wants to jump in and start off? John Brown, what a surprise.
You think? Thank you. Uh, I, yeah, I, obviously, this has a um, a little bit of interest to me. Frank, can you go back to that first slide? I just, for a purpose of clarification for others that may be looking. Uh, I think the areas in blue that you highlighted is what you, somebody thinks that E-Web owns. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that those are the part, those continue to be in our ownership, although some of those on the very north end I'm, might be in question.
Yeah, the one, what I'm concerned about is the east side of the Ferry Street Bridge. I think that's the Jeff Wilson Charles property. The the one that's uh, um, you know, on the east side of the bridge that's above uh, on Fourth. Yeah, right up there to the left of that. Yeah, that one right there.
The the one to the to the far north there on the the east, on the east side of the bridge or the west side?
Uh, the west side, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that, I don't believe we own that one. We own the two parking lots a- along the Fourth Street there.
And about how many acres?
Um, that's a good question, Commissioner Brown. I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay, well, I'd just like to comment. I know that in 2016, we got a pretty detailed report about all the money we'd put into that building when we shut the steam plant down, we put in new chillers, we re- redid all the windows, we uh, did a re-roofed, we just did an elevator. We've put a ton of money into that building, so the bones are really good. Um, I would uh, you know, I'd kind of like to see a cost hold analysis or somebody do something because if the city's putting 14 million into that park right next door and and the the developers are going to proceed with developing the River Park, the Riverfront Park, I think that it may, you know, uh, I don't know what our costs to hold it are. Uh, you know, I know that uh, it may be bet- better for us to wait till that gets a little bit more mature before we sell it, but I don't want to uh, have to spend a lot of money. Well, I mean, that thing probably costs us a quarter of a million dollars a year to maintain whether we have any anybody in it or not. So I'd kind of like to see what it costs us to, you know, maintain it and keep it operational because a a empty building is not a good building. And uh, it kind of see what our our cost, what our break even on holding it is and what we would have to rent it for and 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 things such as that if we held it for a longer period of time rather than just try and give you a recommendation. Uh, I've got my own opinions, but I think it it wouldn't be fair to the process to bring them out right now and just to kind of wait and see what some of the other numbers are. But I'd kind of like a little more more information before I told you. I don't, you know, I I don't think I would be leaning to putting a for sale sign on it right now, although market's really good and I think we're in a bubble, but things are, you know, we don't even put signs up anymore. It's absolutely off the charts what's going on in the marketplace right now.
Yeah. So uh- Brown, we can, we can certainly get a a cost to maintain um, that that building. Um, we did put quite a bit of money into the energy systems. Um, although I don't believe that we replaced the the windows. Those were going to be very expensive for not a lot of return. But we did do the elevators, we did, we put in a new furnace uh, and a number of things to that, to that building. And I I can get the report that showed what we put into it and I can work with staff to figure out how much it is to hold that building um, just from an operational perspective. I don't remember, I I know that um, when we were originally doing the assessment for the 17 acres um, adjacent to it, before we sold it to the city, there was some numbers that that we had received relative to how much property escalates between when a development first begins versus the end of it. Um, so maybe a whole, and you probably would would know that as well. Um, as that area develops, that building's value should increase, I I guess. And it'd be comparing that with the cost to hold it. So we we can get that information.
Thank you.
Sonia, I saw that your hand was up before.
Yeah, I I wanted some more information on how much um, the renters would be in there too, because I I know we were originally looking at how it, how long um, how it would appreciate over time when that other development was um, you know, in process and then it kind of got delayed and now here we are again. So I, similar vein, um, although I was more looking at how much the the lease was and how much we get from them. And if they're even interested in potentially renting it further, I mean, we're only four months away from that lease running out, so I'm assuming they have other plans at this point.
Yeah, I don't believe that rent, that that particular tenant will continue. Um, they um, they continue payments through, I believe, October, but um, it it expires after that. I don't know what the rental market is. Um, that that might be another piece of information that we that we can explore further.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, John Barowski.
Thank you. Um. Yeah, for me, uh, I I see this as a community asset. Um, I would like to see it maintained in uh, if 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 at all possible by a a community organization, whether that's, you know, a government agency, uh, university, something like that would be my, would be my first choice if it if it was for sale rather than to a private entity. Um, I kind of agree with Commissioner Brown that it probably will go up in value. So if if there's an opportunity to find a a tenant that could cover our costs for the next three to five years, that would be something that I would consider. Um, and I also think that there's, should be some sort of a a community engagement in this. Uh, I I don't think that it, for me, I don't feel comfortable five people sitting here, although it is our, it is our purview and we are elected officials to make these decisions. But I also think that the the community input would be something that I would like to see uh, to help me make that decision. What what would the community like to see that building become? And is there a possibility to realize what the community's uh, vision might be for it? That may or may not be possible, but uh, again, I see it as as a community asset that it will dovetail well with the new park that's going in there. So at this point, that's kind of where I'm leaning.
So I would, just a follow-up then to the the two commissioners that have already spoken, Commissioner Brown and Commissioner Carlson. Um, are your thoughts similar to Commissioner Barowski when it comes to the the community asset? Or is it, I, you know, hold it till we can get maximum value, independent of of who that is? Um, I guess I would, I would ask that. Maybe they weren't ready for my question. Um, so Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Barowski just indicated that when it comes to, i- if there's a potential opportunity to sell this, that he believes it's a community asset and that keeping it in community hands would be um, a priority for him. Are are you of the same mind?
Uh, you know, I, having been through the disposition of the rest of the property and how many, that cost us 1.4 million dollars to do a master plan. It costs us $900,000 to write the code. It costs us millions to do mitigation. And um, and then we had to go through two different buyers and it it drug it out five years, John. And um, I'm I'm worried that we're going to get into that same process. Everybody's going to come in and love it. It's a great building. I I, it should have been our library, I get that. But I want to make sure that, you know, my charge is to the ratepayers. I get the community asset concept, but the ratepayers, there's a lot of ratepayers that uh, that are up, you know, up the river and in Springfield and areas that don't, that wouldn't directly benefit from this. And so I kind of have to keep it in the global thing. I I don't have a problem with, you know, asking for RFQs, request, or RFP, request for proposals to see what people want to do with it. But um, I think if we uh, we go to all the other public agencies first, because I know there's another public agency that's had an interest in it, that would maybe check that box. Uh, I think I'm worried that if we go into a bigger process, we're getting, going to get bogged down in years and years of committees and planning and everybody want to make it a a a great building and everything, but nobody's going to have the money. And i- is it going to be our charge to subsidize it? So that those would be my concerns. And so um, I'm not afraid to to consider it, but I would, I want to give it some more thought before I just made that decision.
I I'd be curious how much time it takes to go through that process too. Um, if, you know, if you start down that path with some of the other community organizations, how, how that goes. Um, I'm not opposed to it, but I also think that it's a really good piece of property and if we can, you know, put it to good use and and the public can interact with it, you know, and I I would certainly appreciate that, but I also don't want that to be on E-Web's dime and the customers' dime either.
Yeah, Commissioner Carlson, I think once that we know a few of the 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 facts and figures that were asked for earlier, the cost to hold and and the rental potential and some of those things that we can get a a pretty good feel for, that 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 doesn't take a long time to to do that. Reaching out to a limited number of public agencies um, is is a finite process. It's it's not one that, uh, now, what what can extend that, though, is is that uh, a lot of agencies have have very um, probably worthwhile, very interesting plans, um, but not, it it's one, it's, you have to have both the ability and the desire to make it happen. Some of them have the desire and just not the ability. And so, um, but if they were, had a real mechanism, either through some kind of financing option or something else, then that starts to become a little bit different conversation. It keeps it in public hands at some point in the, in a, under a reasonable timeframe. Um, so, but I don't think reaching out, this is not going to drag on for certainly years and years. It might take several months to go through and and really figure out which agencies are legitimately interested and to what degree when you start getting into some of the figures behind it. Um, but is, it's not something where, you know, we'll be trying to figure this out years from now.
Okay, great, thanks.
Matt?
Thanks. Um, I, yeah, I think I'm in the same camp as Commissioner Brown in terms of uh, I uh, I'm, I don't have a huge preference for, you know, a community ownership or a public ownership of this building ultimately. Um, and I am wary of additional process uh, in the, in the process of of looking to sell it. Uh, do you think those uh, figures of both, you know, what it could be rented for, the cost to hold, but also, you know, what would the sale price look like today if we put it up for sale? I think that could be useful to understand. Um, I think that's all I have here. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, and lastly, I um, agree that I don't, I don't really support having a long drawn-out big public process about what we should do with this. Ideally, it would be something value-add to the community in that spot. Um, we can't really control that, but I guess I support reaching out to a finite number of public agencies, other public groups, and seeing if they're interested in it first, because it it would be nice if it was something that benefited the whole community. But I also realize that there's many ways that that could happen and it doesn't necessarily have to be owned by a public entity to make that happen. And that once we sell it, we don't really get to say.
Yeah, I think the only thing that we we get to say anything about is the time capsule that's built into the the front of the building that um, is supposed to be opened in 2038 or something like that. There's a bunch of E-Web stuff in there somewhere that we we might want to keep. But what, let me see if I can summarize what I'm I'm hearing. There's um, there's some inclination that the value of this will will go up. We need to explore the the value versus versus timing. So what's it worth today versus what it might be be worth? And the cost to hold it for some period of time. Um, they, no rush to put a for sale sign on it right away, for example. Uh, there does seem to be at least a preference to explore keeping this community asset in in public hands. Um, but I'm sensing a reluctance to add much of a process to that um, uh, other than to go through and see what um, agencies might have the ability and desire to uh, pursue this further. Um, and so um, uh, and then as part of that, understanding and probably coming back to the board to talk about some of these values in executive session as to um, the details behind what a sales price might look like, what the timing might look look like, who some of the agencies might be that would be interested. Um, did I capture that correctly?
Yeah, thanks, Frank.
Yeah, a- and when I mentioned a public process, I didn't mean, you know, a master plan or anything like that. I just, I just would like to hear from the community somewhat, what is out there. And and I think the other thing and that might be important is to to find out, is it rentable? You know, what is the market value of it as a, as a rental property at this point in time? Because, you know, we've got a tenant that's leaving and if there's somebody that's willing to go in there for a period of time, that's something that I would like to know too. That would help me make, make a decision whether to sit or or get off the pot.
I'll um, I'll look into that as well, just the rental potential of it. It's um, I'll I'll just have to explore that further, Commissioner. Um, I would also add that we still have some infrastructure in there. Um, this isn't necessarily, it's our backup control center, for example. And so um, there is some timing associated with E-Web's um, I'll say eviction of ourselves, but for no other word. Um, um, completely moving our um, facilities and staff out the the rest of the way. So there's a little bit of a timing issue there. And we're probably talking a year to 18 months um, for that. So um, anyway, I'll look into those things. I think I got enough to run with for now. Um, I'll um, look into into these and um, work to schedule at some point here in the next few months, an executive session with an update and we can talk through values and and opportunities um, at an executive session.
Great.
That work, that works for me. Um, any other input? I just gave you eight minutes back, President Schlossberg. Well, you gave yourself that, thank you.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Um, okay, we are on Agenda Item 11, Correspondence and Board Agendas. So back to you, Frank.
Yes, thank you, President Schlossberg. There were um, there were really three correspondence items. I I added a fourth one at the last minute, um, just not expecting everybody to be able to read that today and go through it. I I mainly wanted to get that in into your hands um, since it had to do with some follow-up items from the strategic plan. And that was um, really dissecting some of the issues in the strategic plan a little bit further, um, based on some of the comments. And and also the fact that when you take a strategic plan from 37 pages down to two pages, it, every sentence does seem to matter a a little bit more at that point. And so there's some, there's some wordsmithing in there, but also a recognition that sometimes things that are not mentioned become things that are important. And so- And so if you get a chance to read that, I'd be, you know, we have check-ins next week. We can talk individually then and then some type of upcoming follow-up with the board around some further strategic work. But your, the, the feedback that took place a couple of weeks ago at the planning session was very helpful. Things like equity have already been included in the plan and other things. So I think that was, that was quite useful. But this is just some further dissecting, especially for those who didn't really live through the first generation of it. The other three items really were officially correspondence items. An ERP, I'm sorry, an IRP update, kind of related also to our RPS, a renewable portfolio standard compliance document. That's something that we have to do every year as well as our IRP update. And then the legislative update from, from Jason on, you know, what's going on in Salem. So be happy to entertain any questions or get the right people on the call. I don't know if Jason's on the call or not, but if he had any questions going on in, in Salem, he could jump in on that as well. Yeah, Commissioner Carlson?
Just on the, the first piece of correspondence, one quick question on the mission section. So there's the kind of three additional points down below, the why and who we serve, what we do and how we do it. Is that intended to be kind of a, a thing that, that goes with the mission or is that just kind of an explanation for the mission for this particular document?
Yeah, that's just for this document as an explanation. That's, that's a way of dissecting it and diagnosing it.
Got it. And otherwise, I really liked the blue language that was added, particularly the transparently and equitably, appreciate that nod to the comments from previous conversations. So, thank you. And then my last thing that I wanted to note on kind of the, well, I guess we're not on the, this is just correspondence, well, no, it is board agendas as well. I will not be able to be at the August 3 meeting. Will not be in range at all. It'll be my first meeting I've ever missed, so. All right. Anyway, so I'll watch the video and, and follow up afterwards. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions on correspondence? I appreciate the, the lead in to the upcoming agenda items. Again, we, we do have the Upriver Board Meeting. And by the way, thank you for all the extracurricular activities over the last month or so. There's, there's been quite a few of them. It's, it's great, not just, not for me, because I get a little tired of you myself, but the rest of staff really does appreciate the opportunity to interact with the board and especially on things like seeing, going on field trips and interacting on subjects. Thanks for taking the time to, to do that. And I was just joking, I, I enjoy all my time with, with all of you. And so I appreciate that very much, but not all boards participate in that way. So, so thanks for doing that. We do have some meaty topics. July is a lot about long-term financial planning, capital planning, to, to President Schlossberg's term, a very heady subjects, I believe is how you refer to that. And so that'll be a good meeting. We'll try to keep it as concise and interactive as possible. But the next, the next event really for us is, is June 15th, up at the Lieberg Fire Station. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody has about correspondence or agenda items.
Well, I'm not seeing people rush to ask a question. I just have a quick question about the July board meeting. And just in reference to Matt and John's request to maybe have some of that information a little bit earlier, just want to point out that that's July 4 weekend. That happens before then. I don't know if people are going to be out of town, how that's going to work. I also know that staff works really hard to get us the board packet information on time, so I know that that's kind of a time crunch for staff, but if there is at all a way to get that, at least some of that information a little bit earlier, that would be helpful.
Yeah, we will do our best to do that. I'll have to review that with staff. President Schlossberg, I, I appreciate the request. I know that there's a lot to that meeting in particular. I don't know the feasibility of that without, without consulting with them, but I'll, I'll note that's the request and we'll do what we can.
Any other questions or comments for Frank? No? All right, then we are on the wrap-up portion. Anyone have anything they'd like to wrap up? No, we're a subdued bunch tonight and maybe the heat is getting to all of us. Yeah. Um, so then I guess that, that brings us to the conclusion of this meeting and I look forward to seeing everybody on the 15th at our Upriver Meeting.
Thank you, everybody.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you all.
Thanks.